We're live.
Okay, we're ready to begin.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening and welcome. This is Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, February 4th. Thank you for joining us. I would note that all council members are joining us virtually this evening. The way we'll be handling voting is we will ask for the for the vote in favor and the vote against. If it's not clear how the vote came out, then we will do a roll call. Vote. All right, please. Rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay. May we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abou Asalee?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Kedalia?
Here.
Mr. Sternan?
Here.
Thank you. This time we'll have our moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda this evening, we have a proclamation in honor of Black History Month. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we recognize and celebrate the many important achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our nation's economic, cultural, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas this year in particular, the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to stand up to racism in all its forms and work actively to build a truly equitable and just society for all people. And whereas the city of Marion is working toward becoming a more welcoming and inclusive community in which all residents are valued and given opportunities to achieve their goals and make positive contributions. And whereas at the city of Marion is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community and throughout our state and nation. And whereas the 2021 national theme for the observance of Black History Month is the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. Now therefore, in recognition of the rich history of African Americans and the contributions of African Americans, past, present, and future in our community, I Nicholas Abou Asalee, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as Black History Month in the city of Marion and encourage all residents to celebrate diversity in our community, seek out educational opportunities on the history and contributions of African Americans, and join our efforts to promote progress toward a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Okay. Under presentations this evening, we have a presentation to discuss the school library card project that was undertaken by the Marion Public Library and School Districts in Marion.
Hi, is it okay for me to start?
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Renee Greenlee. I'm a Children's and Family Services Librarian at Marion Public Library. And I would like to tell you about the process of partnering with the Limar and Marion Independent School Districts regarding the goal of universal student library cards. Next slide, please. So the overarching aim was for all students in the Marion Independent and Limar School Districts to have access to Marion Public Libraries, print collections, and digital resources. There were multiple reasons for reaching toward this goal. One reason is that not every student in Marion had a public library card. Various barriers can make it difficult for some people to get library cards, including lack of transportation, past fear of fines, and lack of knowledge about our resources. Another reason for this goal was that students had access to limited collections in their school and classroom libraries. Teachers and teacher librarians expressed interest in helping their students get public library cards. And as an added push this year, COVID-19 also limited access to school library materials with some students learning virtually. I'm sorry, am I still, am I still on?
Yes, you are.
I'm sorry. Okay, something changed with my screen. Thank you.
Okay.
Next slide, please. A universal student library card, however, goes beyond accommodating access struggles during the pandemic. By providing a library card to all Marion students, the path toward increased equitable access for students of all races, ethnicities, abilities, and economic situations has been strengthened. This project strongly aligned with the mission and vision of Marion Public Library, as well as the library's commitments to our community to welcome all, remove barriers, encourage curiosity and learning, and build strong relationships. One of the most important relationship or partnership a public library should have is one with its local school districts. Public library staff and school district staff have common goals for the students in our city, including literacy and lifelong learning. By providing all students with a public library card, Marion Public Library has committed to supporting students' growth and development in those areas. Next slide, please. So how did we work toward the goal of universal student library cards? I reached out to staff members in the Limar and Marion Independent School Districts last June to get the ball rolling. Through Limar, I connected with Carla Reese, Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, who became the continuous point person for this project, and Janelle Brower and Gretchen Kriegel through Marion Independent School District. Through these parties, we worked out such details as borrowing privileges and resource access, operating responsibilities of each partner, data sharing of student contact information. Though the de Rachel put a pause in our planning, 28e agreements were eventually created between Marion Public Library and each school district and signed by all boards in October. At this point, each district informed parents and guardians of the opportunity for universal student library cards and the option to opt out if preferred. As of December 16th, 7,825 Limar students and 2,696 Marion Independent students were registered for their own student library card through Marion Public Library. The library card students received is not a physical card, rather, it's a library account number and PIN. Students and families were notified regarding their account numbers and PINs before holiday break, and they were provided with a detailed resource pamphlet that describes the use of the library card number, as well as print and digital materials and online resources they can access. Next slide, please. Through universal student library cards, students now have access to print materials at Marion Public Library, Cedar Rapids Public Library, and Hiawatha Public Library. They also have access to digital ebooks, e-audiobooks, magazines, movies, music, and documentaries through Hoopla, Overdrive, Cloud Library, Canopy, and other platforms. Through Hoopla, it is possible for multiple users to access copies of the same ebook. So this will be beneficial to teachers who may assign a certain book to their classrooms. Students will also benefit from online resources for homework help and research through Brainfuse, Ebscohost, Explora, and more. Looking toward the future, one goal that coincides with universal student library cards includes using our Bookmobile to make deliveries of holds students have placed to their respective schools. This will further reduce barriers to our collection, which continues to be an ultimate commitment to our community. Next slide, please. So I will wrap up this presentation with one of my favorite signs that embodies the belief and understanding that everyone is welcome in public libraries, including Marion Public Library. And universal student library cards are one of the ways we can express how we value everyone who comes in our doors and uses our resources. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. I think this is wonderful. Any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Renee Grant Harper here. Just, this might be a question that only results in a, in a guess, but the collection of the Marion Library coupled with Limars and Marion's, do you have any idea what the total combined collection would be across those three entities?
You know, I'm not actually sure of the print collection you're asking about.
Yeah, I just, you know, wondering, does this effectively cause a, you know, doubling, tripling, quadrupling of the resources that are available for students? Like I said, I had an anticipation, it would be a guess at best.
Right. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite sure of the numbers in each of the district's libraries, and I'm sure, you know, each teacher has their own school library as well, or their classroom library plus the, the school library, so I'm, I'm not quite sure about that answer, but I knew, do know that, you know, adding access to the, the metro library network, you know, because that includes Marion, Cedar Rapids, and Hiawatha Public Libraries, that significantly increases their, their access to materials.
That's a great distinction. Thank you.
Grant, this is Kelly from the Marion Public Library. I think I don't have a number either, Renee, so I can't give you that, but I can say, you know, school libraries are much smaller than public libraries' collection, just funding wise. I mean, having access to those both online and print materials, I mean, it has got to be more than triple the amount of resources that they have access to. I mean, hundreds of thousands of, of materials between print and, and online, so I mean, I don't have a number, but, I mean, I, I would say we're, we're multiplying their collection and their access to those collections by maybe even tenfold.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you for, for that estimation. I think this is a great, a great project. Thanks for pulling it off with everybody.
Yeah. I just want to say too, while, while I've got a chance, I, I do want to give a big thank you to Renee and a big thank you to the school districts. Renee has been diligently working on this project since early summer, and this is something I know across the districts and within the library, we've wanted it to happen for years, so there was significant work that got put in on all three sides, and I, I just want to thank all three of those parties.
Thank you. Thanks to you, Renee, Kelly, all the staff of our library. Our library is one of our greatest assets, there's no doubt, and you all make our city look good every day, and you know, I often say, all the things that happened at the library, I don't know where they'd, where they'd happen if we didn't have our library, and as I'm out and about talking about the project, the new library project in the community, I mean, this lot, this slide that you have here really kind of says it all, that, you know, our library is a place where people of all backgrounds, of any socioeconomic status can have access. And you said access a few times in your presentation, and it's really about access to technology, to information, to education, to interaction. And so much good comes out of that. So thank you for, for all you're doing and for this, with this project.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Renee or for Kelly? Okay, thank you again.
Yep, thank you very much.
Bye bye. Okay, our next presentation this evening is from Marion Economic Development. Yeah, are we still having the presentation, Rachel, from the Economic Alliance? Or has that been postponed?
No, that's, he should be on the Zoom call here.
Okay, okay, great.
I'm here, Mayor, if you'd like me to go.
Yes, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate taking just a few minutes of your time. Doug Newman from the Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance. Want to thank you for your support of, of the work that we do and for the long, longstanding support, and often I come and give you just a quick update and, and say hi, and this is a little different format in a, in a little different year, but I appreciate taking just a few minutes tonight, and I'll try to be, try to be very, very brief. Certainly appreciate the, the strong relationship. I, I feel comfortable, good about everything that's going on with the city of Marion, with Medco, and with the, with the Marion Chamber, the many relationships that we have. When you look back at, at kind of this, we just had our annual meeting on Thursday. Now we're sort of, you know, we just finished looking back. Now we're going to look ahead. When you look back at the crazy 2020 and having to tear up our plans and, and, you know, make the best of a tough situation, there are some great things that come out of that, and certainly when you think about the joint programming that Headco and Medco and the Economic Alliance were able to do first in the spring, then we did another round of business programming in the fall, and now we're in the midst of several public policy updates. And I know Nick is presenting tonight too, but there's a lot of strong collaborative work that's been done, all of which I really appreciate. Just to look ahead real quickly at 2021, our strategic plan is, is on the screen here, and this has also been emailed to you. I'm going to hit just a couple of highlights, but I would encourage you to, to look through it. We've got goals and tactics around public policy, around community development, around economic development, and around, and around business support, and you can read all through those, and I'm always happy to spend time talking about these things. If anybody ever wants to do a deeper dive on any of these things, I'd love the opportunity to do that. When I think about what are the real regional priorities, the regional strategies for the next year, kind of the highlights out of this, rather than reading you the whole plan within economic development, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to, to relook at our five-year regional economic development plan. Now, the plan's only three years old, but the world has changed dramatically, and I think we face some risks and some threats coming out of this pandemic year. There also are some opportunities, and I think our, our industry cluster strategies, our target strategies, the way that we approach remote worker strategies, all of those kind of things, it's really important to get back around a plan. And I look forward to working with regional representation on that. That effort's going to be led by EC-COG, so it truly is a multi-county effort, but I think they'll be relying on economic development people in, in each community quite a bit, so I'm looking forward to that project. Throughout the rest of that economic development and workforce section, you see a lot of workforce goals. Many of our companies are still struggling to recruit workers. These short-term, really high unemployment rates haven't changed the fundamental need that we have to attract and retain workers. In fact, many of the same skill sets, many of the same sectors that we saw before the pandemic are still struggling with the exact same number. So a lot of those strategies stay the same from year to year, and we're really trying to be aggressive and innovative in those workforce, in those workforce strategies. Within community development, if you want to flip to the next slide, and I'm not, you don't have to look at these on the slide, I'm just hitting the, the highlights here, but you see the plan. There, there too, we're looking at, when you think about Uptown Marion, when you think about Czech Village or Newbo, when you think about those core districts of our communities and the things that happen there, there are some post-COVID realities that we need to really figure out there as well. I suspect we're going to need less office space but more housing. Maybe the nature of community events and gathering spaces changes a little bit. I think that, that we can win and lose in some of these things, and it's great to get together with core district people to really talk about those opportunities.
Seems like we lost Doug. He froze up, kind of waiting to see if he. Okay. So it's just a problem with Doug. Everyone, everyone else is still on and.
Yeah, it appears, appears to be just him. It's like everything else is fine.
Okay.
I can see Lon, I can see Grant moving around. Just watching the screen to see if he rejoins here.
Okay. In the interest of time, unless you think he's joining right now, maybe we can move on to the Medco presentation, and then if he rejoins and we can go back to his, is that, is that possible?
Yep, that'd be fine.
Nick Glue, are you with us?
I am. Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, so next on our agenda is Nick Glue with Marion Economic Development Corporation. Please go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Council, for just giving me an opportunity to provide our, our quick quarterly update. Perhaps this is a good time to talk about public policy and some of the governor's broadband legislation she's, she's proposing. Anyway, I, I do appreciate, and Doug and I enjoy the opportunity to kind of coordinate on these presentations. We do collaborate with the Economic Alliance in some, in some key areas, public policy being one of them, but also on the, on the business recruitment side of things, and, and you've heard in the past couple of years, the ICR entity and some of the recruitment strategy that they really drive. We, those are important strategies to us to be at the table with them and the, the development and implementation of them as well, so appreciate Doug stopping by to update you on some of those broader strategies. I just wanted to briefly go through a few stats, provide an update. It's kind of the lens that we're looking through as we start 2021 and, and wrap up quick. Back in October, I think, I think October was the last data set that we presented to you. This is just kind of the status of where on the unemployment situation looks right now. This is Lynn County. So you can see, we continue to really remain in a pretty good situation as far as overall continuing unemployment claims. It is normal that they would tick up in the month of January following the, the, the holiday retail season. Construction layoffs typically happen this time of year, but you can see the data set in January 23rd, thirty, just a little over 3,600 continuing unemployment claims in Lynn County. We'll go to the next slide. You can see the unemployment rate overall, again, is strong. This is an important point of reference. So if we just get really granular and look at the unemployment rate for the city of Marion, at the end of December, that was 3.4%. If we rewind to December 2019, we were at 2.8%. So considering the year that we've had, we have really rebounded in a strong way. But I'm going to tell you more, more to that story in just a moment. Next slide. No changes here. These are the industries affected most by unemployment claims, going all the way back to when we started tracking this around the beginning of the pandemic. Top four impacted sectors, manufacturing, accommodation, and food service are self-employed, and then interestingly enough, healthcare and social assistance, perhaps one of the sectors that we're leaning on the most here in the past year. Next slide. This is kind of an important element to the story of, of low unemployment. So you can see, this top chart is total employment across our MSA. Our MSA is is Lynn County, Jones County, and escaping me, Iowa, Iowa County, Benton County? I'm, I'm getting cross, too many counties. Anyway, just three counties makes up the Cedar Rapids MSA. At the end of December, there were 138,000 jobs available in the MSA. If you rewind to that same period one year ago, there were 145,800 jobs available. So while our unemployment rate is down, that is also considering the fact that we have 10,000, little less than 10,000 fewer jobs available. Now, the good news is, we hit bottom in April of, of 2020 at 131,000, and we are recovering nicely as far as available jobs in the MSA. But the other challenge is our labor force. It is down 20,000 in the past year. Labor force represents the total number of people who either have employment or who are actively seeking employment. Somewhere along the way, we have lost 20,000 people in our labor force. So I guess the story that we're telling here is, is while on paper unemployment rate looks, looks good, that, that's good for the people in our community that are looking for jobs, there are still jobs that need more and more people. Many folks would say, when we get to 3% unemployment, by definition, that is full unemployment. We know that there's just a certain sector who are on that list of looking for jobs that have some big challenges and barriers to actually being employed. So just a little context behind those unemployment numbers, how quickly we are back to really the, the pre-COVID scenario of we just need more people, more qualified workers to fill jobs that are available. So let's go on to the next slide. You've, you've seen some of these numbers. This is just completing the year, and I know in your budget sessions, you talk a lot about tax base. These charts are not necessarily what tax base that's happening tomorrow. This is more a preview of future budget years, right? So this is a reflection of the activity that will translate to tax base in a year or two in the future. So obviously, as we ended the year, we had about $32 million of commercial industrial construction. I will add an asterisk to that because that does include when we have public sector construction. That is included in this number. We did in November. There's a big orange spike there. We were just talking about that project earlier. Our community's new public library was reflected in that. A very strong year for housing at $29 million of new construction valuation started. Let's go to the next slide. From a trend standpoint, this is showing new commercial industrial construction just over the last 10 years. 19, a big number. Our schools built, so that's again the asterisk for that. But you can see overall, we continue to have a very strong trend of new commercial industrial construction. Next slide. This is measuring housing growth. I know our planning and building department, you've heard them say just how busy they were over the year, especially with permits for repairs. What I'll say is this chart doesn't reflect any of that work. So that's, that's above and beyond what we're looking at in this chart. This is reflecting, the blue is the number of new single-family home permits, so new single-family starts. We are at a number that we haven't seen since 2016, so it was a very strong year, a very strong ending of the year. And then same thing for multifamily units, another strong number for that. Next slide. Just briefly to talk about some activity that we know many of these projects are either being talked about tonight, or you're aware of them, and they've been at our construction for a while. Green Park, that's the YMCA redevelopment. The council was very supportive in helping electric specialty manufacturing get some foundations in the ground before winter. Just so you know, that did happen, so they're in a position to be able to continue that construction once the rest of their building shows up. Big project in the MEC at 10.4 million. I know many members of the city council had an opportunity to tour the multifamily development out at Squawk Creek Crossing underway. It's been great to see the TWG project on Fifth Avenue continue. So those are all big numbers, projects that will be wrapping up in 2021. And then, of course, we'll, we'll kind of put Broad Main in this category of just getting ready to get underway as we, as we enter the new year. And then, of course, we'll kind of put Broad Main in this category of just getting ready to get underway as we enter the new year. But as we look at the next slide, we still feel like our pipeline is really strong of additional projects that hopefully we'll see get underway at some point in the year. These first two projects that I highlight, I highlight for a couple of reasons. One, they're great projects. These are projects that we are very close in executing sales agreements on in the Marion Enterprise Center. But these are also projects that are a reaction to, I think, a pretty substantial shift in the type of product that we need to have available in our community to respond to business needs. You know that seven or eight years ago or more, we initiated the process to get the Marion Enterprise Center underway. Having shovel-ready sites is important, but is today's world, the number of projects and opportunities that we see, first and foremost, are companies looking for existing buildings. The good and the bad is that we are not a community that has existing buildings sitting empty, ready to facilitate companies who are looking. A great example is Ecolibs. They found an existing building, unfortunately, back in the community that they came from because we had no product to show them in Marion. And so there's lots of examples where we need to position ourselves with available real estate that is ready to accommodate folks' needs. And we're hopeful that in 2021, we can build just a little over 100,000 square foot of flex space. So lots of great projects as you look at this list. I'm happy to talk deeper about this list, but we'll move on for now. As I wrap up, I just wanted to briefly touch on our strategic plan, our playbook. You know that I talked about this at the end of the year, I think when I presented in November, that this is the first year that we're really excited on some specific things that our strategic plan aligns alongside your strategic plan. So first, in 2021, we have, next slide, five broad areas that our playbook kind of revolves around these five themes. We've shared them with you in the past, so nothing's really changed, but just a reminder here. But the next slide just highlights a few kind of in-the-weeds type of items that we're excited about. First, the transformation of a targeted market-driven economic development policy. That's in your strategic plan. And I'd like to let you know that as soon as next week, we actually have a meeting with your staff, your team, to start doing a little bit of a SWOT analysis on our current economic development policy and how we can improve that to accomplish the goals stated here. The second and third ones are items that we've had on our radar for the last couple of years. We want to work together. We don't want this to be one group against another group. But we want to be able to say that we're a project, we're a community where a project can be up and running faster than anywhere else. There's a lot of process involved in that, and that's a project that we're excited to work alongside your staff to drive forward here in 2021. The step-by-step guide for developing in Marion really is about streamlining the process and looking at it from our perspective as we advocate for the development community. So those first several are related in a lot of ways. Number four, there's a word in there called synchronous that it doesn't really matter what that is, but essentially it's about growing our business retention strategy. And I just share that with you because you'll remember that a year ago, you invested with us to bring another person on our team, that is Brady Quinn, to help us make sure that we are in front of our business community in ways that we haven't been in prior years. Now, obviously, the past year was very interesting. It was all hands on deck with business retention. And we were honored to have even the city council join us in that effort as we were reaching out to our business community. But watch for more information. You will get a full report back on our activities here at the end of 2021. Quick update on our community build. That project remains on track to sell, be able to market our first home. By the end of the school year, our goal is to quickly move forward and acquire our second property for the next school year. So again, thank you for those LMI dollars that are supporting that project. And then last, and I don't mean to get deep into this project here, and I won't, but we have a specific item that says achieve airport clarity so that we can begin planning for what's beyond the current iteration of the Marion Enterprise Center. As you all know, we have ground that's impacted by the airport. We have thoughts on how we think about the future of development. It's all impacted around the long-term plan for our airport. So we are very supportive of the city's efforts to really start by understanding what the airport means to our community and kind of that economic impact analysis. So know that we are very much supportive of that process and are eagerly awaiting what comes out of that because it impacts the work that we do as your Economic Development Corporation and continue to support development around that community asset. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but thanks again for your partnership. And we're excited for 2021, and I hope everybody is together with us.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick? I don't see any hands up. Well, thanks, Nick, to you and your team for your continued partnership with the city and everything you do for the advancement of Marion. So we really appreciate your work. And you're coming here to keep us informed on what's going on, so. Okay. I see that Doug Newman has rejoined us. Doug, are you back with us?
Mayor, I am. I apologize for technology flub there. And I'll just try to put a bow on this really quick. I appreciate my friend Nick Glue picking me up there. And we do so many things together. Certainly, I think about, and I agree with all of those priorities, really excited about the Medco plan as well. I agree strongly about the need for spec building sites. I mean, there's a lot of trends in economic growth that we work on together. And he mentioned, Nick mentioned the synchronous interviews. When we go out and visit with businesses by combining all of those interviews and using the same format, the same question, combining Nick's interviews with the ones that Mike Lukin from my staff did, I think we wound up right, just over 100 businesses that answered the same questions. And really, that critical mass of information gives us great business intelligence and really the ability to kind of forecast what's going on and get things that businesses need. Let me hit on just a couple last things and let you go. Thank you. And again, I apologize for the technology glitch there. But one of the things that we look forward to exploring with you and really being connected with the Marion City Council is that traditionally, the Regional Economic Development Group can certainly play a role in election referendums. And as we look to the extension, the potential extension of the sales tax, we want to be a resource for you and play whatever role all of the area cities think that the Economic Alliance might play. We did put that in our strategic plan. We worded it to explore the role that we can play because I think largely that depends on you and what role that you want us to play in educating voters and talking about the potential extension of that referendum and sales tax revenue that I think has been critical to cities in doing some of the project work that you've done. And then the last big change, I think, from year over year is just, you know, chambers have always talked about bi-local, but we tended to do that very much during the holiday shopping season. I think what the last year has shown us more than anything is that the advantages of local commerce, the importance of locally-owned, family-owned businesses is something that we need to be focused on year-round. And our initiatives through RallyCap, our initiatives to create year-round initiatives around bi-local will really be, I think, an enduring change from 2021. So that was brief. It was interrupted. That was a little bit of a disjointed presentation, but I hope you get the gist of it and take a look at it. Again, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the support and the really strong relationship that we feel right now in the metro area. We're going to keep doing our role at the, playing our part in the Economic Alliance to do everything we can to grow the economy, grow the workforce, make this an awesome place to live and work. So thank you. And I'd be open to any questions that you might have, but I know you've got a lot of other important stuff on the agenda tonight.
Okay, I'll just ask quickly if anyone has questions for Doug. Okay, Doug, thanks again for making the time to present to us. And it goes without saying, we really appreciate the great collaboration that we have with the Alliance and that Medco has with the Alliance. It's no secret, we really believe that collaboration and coordination benefits all of us in the region. And we really are, you know, a region that depends on each other. And we, you know, working together, we accomplish a lot more. So thank you for that, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Very good. Thanks so much.
All right. Bye-bye. Okay, moving on with our agenda, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Harper?
It's that we actually have the public forum first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. It's my fault. Thanks for the reminder. At this time, we have a public forum, which is time that's set aside on the agenda for comments from members of the public on any item that is on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Any comments regarding a public hearing item will be time at that time for comments. So do we have anyone who has asked to address the council in the public forum?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Okay, seeing that we don't have any comments for the public forum, we will move forward now with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F5, resolutions 29214 through 29234.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F5, resolutions 29214 through 29234. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, hearing that there are no nos, the motion is approved. We'll move on to the next item, and I will turn that over to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osale's extension. This includes just one item, E1, resolution 29235.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osale's extension, resolution 29235. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. It passed with one abstention. Back to you, the mayor.
Okay, thanks, Colette. Okay, next, under our regular agenda, administrative services, we have a public hearing on the proposed development agreement with What Do You Want, Inc. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, a recap, Your Honor. Through a memorandum of understanding, the city agreed to incentivize the development of a mixed-use building at the 1204 lot on Seventh Avenue. Indiv is in the form of a 75% tax rebate up to seven years and capped at $50,000. This is consistent with our economic development policy. And the last step before we can certify those tax rebates is to fully execute this development agreement.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Amal. We'll come back with questions from the council when we get to the resolution. So at this time, the public hearing is open, and we would ask for comments from members of the public either in favor or in opposition to this measure. Do we have anyone who has either submitted comments prior to the meeting or has asked to address the council during the meeting?
I have not received any comments.
Okay, so the city clerk has not received comments. While we wait to see if anyone is attempting to email the city clerk at this time, we'll ask Amal or the city staff if we've received comments outside of the meeting. Any comments at all about this measure?
I have not.
Okay, and Rachel, I assume no one at this time is trying to email you?
Correct. I have not received any other comments.
Okay. So seeing that there are no comments from the public, we will note that for the record and then close the public hearing, move on to the resolution. Councilmember Brandt?
Mayor, I've moved to approve resolution number 29236, approving development agreement with What Do You Want, Inc., authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29236, approving the development agreement with What Do You Want, Inc., authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. I would just note for people who are joining us, this project is the Tommaso's Building on the corner of Seventh Avenue and 12th Street. And I think we can all be happy with the result of this development after a number of years of waiting for something to happen on that corner. So any comments from council, discussion or questions for Amal? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 29236, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to direct staff to negotiate a contract regarding general obligation corporate purpose and refunding loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $25 million.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to negotiate a contract regarding general obligation corporate purpose and refunding loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $25 million. Any discussion? Amal, would you mind just doing a quick recap for people who are joining this meeting to understand what this is about?
Yes, staff is seeking direction from council to negotiate an agreement with Wells Fargo regarding the Rachel Recovery interim financing. This is to cash flow, the cleanup project as we are waiting for FEMA public assistance grant.
Okay. Just wanted, it's a big number, and I wanted to be sure that people who are observing the meeting understood what this is about. So, okay, any discussion or questions? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, at this time, I move to remove from the table the certified list for fire lieutenant. This was tabled January 7th of 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove from the table the certified list for fire lieutenant, which was tabled on January 7th, 2021. Discussion about removing this item from the table and placing it on the floor. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve certified list for fire lieutenant, which was tabled January 7th, 2021, and just removed from table.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified list for fire lieutenant. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the certified list for fire lieutenant, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29237, approving purchase of an apparatus exhaust removal system from Ward No Smoke Systems in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29237, approving the purchase of an apparatus exhaust removal system from Ward No Smoke Systems in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Hey, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number 29237, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Moving on to engineering.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project calendar regarding the 2021 HMA resurfacing project as follows. This will include, include Resolution Numbers 29238 through 29240.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2021 HMA resurfacing project, including Resolutions 29238 through 29240. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the project calendar regarding the 2021 sidewalk ramp project as follows. Resolutions 29241 through 29243.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2021 sidewalk ramp project, including Resolutions 29241 through 29243. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved.
Mayor, I moved to approve the project calendar regarding the C Mar Phase 4 project in the city of Marion from the east side of Indian Creek Bridge over Marion Boulevard to Seventh Street. Twin continuous welded girder bridge and PCC trail. This includes the Resolutions 29244 through 29246.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the C Mar Trail Phase 4 project from the east side of Indian Creek Bridge over Marion Boulevard to Seventh Avenue. This is our new pedestrian, pedestrian bridge project, part of the trail project. This includes Resolutions 29244 through 29246. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah. Mike, could you remind me again what the acronym PCC stands for? I know you educated me on that just recently.
Here it's Portland Cement Concrete.
I am shocked you don't know that. You know everything. Okay. Any other discussion on this? I would just remind everyone that what Mike mentioned on Tuesday at the work session is that the decorative columns and some of the decorative artwork will not, will not come until the bridge has been fully constructed and accepted by the DOT. That's in the second phase. So, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance Number 21-01, amending Chapter 66, Section 66.02 of the Code of Ordinances related to load and weight restrictions. This will be the initial consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance Number 21-01, amending Chapter 66, Section 66.02 of the Code of Ordinances related, related to load and weight restrictions. This is the initial consideration. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance Number 21-01, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move.
I, can I just interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
For the next two items, I will turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem as to avoid any appearance of conflict as it might affect my part ownership in the building, so.
All right.
Okay, Grant.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, I move to direct staff to proceed with the requirement to install a four-inch fire service line into all properties affected by the Seventh Avenue Streetscape project and engage with building and business owners to design a cost-share program of up to 50% of the installation cost.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to proceed with the requirement to install a four-inch fire service line into all properties affected by the Seventh Avenue Streetscape project and engage with the building and business owners to design a cost-share program of up to 50% of installation costs. Discussion or questions? Steve?
Yeah, Mike, you indicated in your memo that we received that this estimated cost has changed from $15,000 to $10,000 because we're not going to be including a pressure indicator valve which must be around $5,000. Can you tell us what the impact of that is and what that really means?
Yeah, so we had a, a meeting with staff to discuss that and that was something that originally FIRE was pushing to do. But depending on how the sprinkler system is installed, depends on where that indicator valve goes. And so, our main goal is to get the service into the building, put a cap on it and then shut the valve where the T is. And at future time, when they put the actual sprinkler system in, that's the time that they could put that valve in and determine where the best location for that valve is.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. It passes with one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to proceed with developing an Uptown ADA Assistance Program to provide 50% of improvement cost up to $5,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to proceed with developing an Uptown ADA Assistant Assistance Program to provide 50% of improvement cost up to $5,000. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. A motion passion, passes rather with one abstention. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to proceed with installing salvaged historic bricks on 10th Street from 6th Avenue to 7th Avenues and supplementing with similar bricks.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to proceed with installing salvaged historic bricks on 10th Street from 6th to 7th Avenues and supplementing with similar bricks. Mike, do you want to recap the additional information that you provided to council since the last, since the work session?
Yep, what I have here is a slide deck of seven different alternatives for a council to consider. So option number one that we're looking at right now, the plans are Seventh Avenue is to the left and 6th Avenue is to the right. This is 10th Street. And so, how the plans are drawn today is just PCC concrete. And for this section from crosswalk to crosswalk, in the $6.8 million cost estimate, it is $104,473.10 to build it how we have it designed today is option number one. You can go to option number two, the next slide, so this is instead putting this section completely as the historic brick and assuming that every brick that we pick up in the existing section does not break. With this, we are not able to, even with the brick on 9th and 10th, because some of the brick is already gone, we would have to supplement some of this brick with non-Marion brick or we would have to work with public service where they have some stockpiled. I'm not sure if Director Miller had a chance to take a look and see how much we have. A lot of it's not palletized, some of it's just in a pile to see how much we actually have. But that's assuming no loss in brick, which is not realistic. Wanted to start with that number. So that takes the, the project up to 288 and change. That's it. We can go to the next slide. So option number three is assuming a 25% loss, which is probably still on the, the low side, but you can see that number goes up to almost $312,000. Next slide. Option four, which is getting closer to what would likely happen with having that existing brick, when you pick it up and reuse it, you are going to lose some and then with cutting brick to fit the new cross-section, getting up to $336,000. Then we looked at splitting it a little bit, so option five, if you go to the next slide, is only putting it in the parking areas, so in the diagonal and the parallel parking areas, that is about $261,000 in extra cost. And option six on the next slide is only putting it down the center of the street where the cars would typically drive is about $269,000 to do that. And then the last.
Mike, was this just real quick, when you're mentioning these costs, is that, that's in place of the $104,000, not in addition, or is it an addition?
It would be in lieu of the $100,000.
In place of the $104,000, okay. Just to be clear, all right.
And then option seven that we put in there, there is a small amount of brick that we are putting to accent the crosswalk that would go from the North Plaza to eventually the South Plaza. And this was likely going to be concrete brick. And so this is something where we could put in the historic bricks in this area on the two areas that are blue. To salvage the existing brick, we are talking about, about $120,000 and then we would likely have extra brick that could be stockpiled for a future project. So this would be a, a way to accent the street and put it in there and not have to put so much of the historic brick into and then one more slide. When we had the Streetscape Open House virtually, we did have a couple of questions, poll questions that we had the public fill out. And these were the responses, the first question is, should the project reuse brick from the demolished streets, the new Streetscape? So 49% said yes, 27% said no, and 23% said they're not sure. And the other question was, should Seventh Avenue Street Improvement Project spend additional public funds to incorporate and maintain new brick pavers into the new public streets in Uptown? 37% said yes, 41% said no, and 22% said they were not sure. So that's kind of the, the information in the, that I was, I provided City Council yesterday as some options and looking for a direction.
Okay, thank you, Mike. We'll take questions from Mike or comments or thoughts?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Colette, was that you?
Yeah, yeah, I think myself and Grant, I'll go and then I think Grant has some too. Is, can we just get a little bit of information about the maintenance, right? I've heard a lot where the brick is hard to maintain in our winters and just the extreme changes in temperature, so can, can somebody just give us a little bit of background on that today?
Director Miller, are you available to discuss that?
Yeah, I can, Mayor, if that's okay.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so the existing antique brick that is throughout Marion, we, we do not take any precautions for winter maintenance. We, we've been piling those just like a, a normal street for, you know, ever since the, the brick streets have been in. The new bricks, however, on 10th Street, 6th Avenue, we have to use just one truck. The reason why is that we have to use a special blade. It's, it's a more of a polymer blade, it's not a steel blade. And if we use a steel blade, they will just chip and, and crumble, so through the sections of 6th Avenue and 10th Street where we do have the new brick, we have to use one truck with a specific blade to perform all, all of our winter maintenance activities. Hope that helps, so.
So the, the short answer is they don't make them like they used to.
Uh, no, they don't.
The new, the new bricks are the ones that are likely to crumble and the old bricks
Correct.
Haven't had to worry much about.
I, I think with the antique pavers, any brick is going to chip. And what I, just my opinion is that when the antique pavers chip, people tend to accept that a little bit better than a, a new paver. And so that's, if you walk down through the older streets in town with antique brick, most of them are chipped or rounded. Whereas, you know, on the new streets with the new brick, when they do chip, you, you do see them quite a bit more.
They've been there for 100 years.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Grant?
Yeah, then thank you for introducing that, th- this topic, Colette, because I, I was going that direction as well. So I, I did receive some information from Mike because I asked about, I think it was the, the life cycle of the materials that are being proposed. And the clay pavers, new ones have a shorter lifespan than concrete pavers which have a shorter lifespan of the clay pavers, the old antique ones, which we were just talking about, which has a less lifespan than asphalt which has less of a lifespan for Portland cement concrete, AKA PCC. So, just from the standpoint of what Ryan was saying in terms of special handling, coupled with the anticipated reduced life cycle for the material, the bricks, I, I, there's nothing there from just a, a sort of a qualitative basis that causes me to get very enthused about having more bricks in the downtown. And I would just observe for those that ultimately do come loose, we could have trip hazards existing for some period of time before we are either made aware of them or detect them that would be problematic potentially for any kind of pedestrian traffic. I guess that was a comment.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Renee, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I just want to chime in, I appreciate, first of all, all of the, the data we were given and the numbers and the survey results, so thank you for collating that and sending that out, Mike, so we can consider it. Like I said on Tuesday, I feel like with all the planning that we've done for years for this area and the intention and the aesthetics that having just that little strip of brick will seem very patchwork and not very uniform in the overall scheme of things, coupled with the at least twice as much cost, and that's with the no breakage figure. And then, coupled with, you know, the, the good point that Grant just made, I just think in terms of priorities for I just think in terms of priorities for the city, I don't want to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on. This little area. I'd much rather do something else with the brick because I think. It's meaningful and it's a very Marion cool aesthetic. And I think that we can come up with something to do with those, but putting them back in the street is not something I'm in favor of. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Will.
I talked about this on Tuesday and then I would have to. Say that I'm still in favor of keeping our brick street. I mean. Like like I said Tuesday, we don't have many left and it's the history of Marion and I think it's important that we keep as much. Of our history that we can. And in this case, I think we can. It may not be the entire road, but maybe a portion of the road or. Maybe one of the, I forget which option it was, but maybe it is just the street itself and then the. The parking can be concrete. Just, I'm in favor of keeping the street as brick. Yes, it does cost a little bit more, but. I think it's important for our history that we don't lose all of our original brick streets.
Okay, we'll go to Randy and then back to Colette.
Thank you, Mayor. I I would like to just chime in as well, too. I'm. Concerned that our bricks that we've had, they've they've lasted this long. But without certainty as to what we're actually going to be able to salvage when we go to pick them up. I guess I would rather try to preserve them in the accents of our uptown area rather than using them as the primary roads again. We know that the roads that we put down today will not last another 100 years and. We know that with the challenges that we have with the truck traffic and the wear and tear. I'm afraid that we're just going to continue to just keep shortening the material and the time. That's left in those bricks. If we were to use those more constructively in accents in our uptown. I think that we would still be able to preserve that brick and. Appreciate it and enjoy it for a much longer time period and for generations to come. I just. I wanted to weigh that in as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Colette.
Thank you. I guess I should have said this earlier, but I am I. Right, I think our uptown has a really cool mix of old and new, which makes us pretty unique. And getting those numbers from Mike was really helpful. And then what Ryan had shared today. I I I think I'm certainly in the camp of. Of not using those brick in the street, but finding another way. To repurpose those bricks in the work that we're doing. I I think we can, right, once again, it's sort of that mix between the old and the new, and I think we can find a unique a unique way to use those bricks. But yet really think about, you know, long term maintenance of our uptown with our extreme weather that we have here in Iowa. So. Just wanted to share that's where I am with this one.
Okay, thank you. You know, for my part, I I think it it's clear from the beginning that I have not been in favor of. Using the new brick in streets and I've made that comment several times. Well, we never really talked about reusing the current brick. And, you know, you don't, you don't get a chance to do this every day. This is, you know. Something you do every, I don't know, how how many decades. And this. People like Uptown Marion, even before we redo the streetscape, people love Uptown Marion because it has a certain feel. It 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 has a certain. Quaintness to it. People like. Like spending time there when there are things to do there because of the way it makes them feel. It's goes back to the same argument with, you know, everything, the houses and all that, you know. Everything that we have done, you know. I I I I fully believe that everyone is interested in preserving the history, so I don't want to imply anything else. But, you know, if you take away little elements of those things that make people. Have that, however, they feel about Uptown Marion. Take away one element at a time before you know it, it's changed and it becomes like every other city. So in my, in my opinion, it's worth keeping this remnant of of the history. I think that people in Marion would appreciate that. I think. It's, it's the right thing to do, but I I get that I'm in a minority group on this, so I do appreciate. At least that council members are in favor, sounds like, of reusing the brick and other elements of the uptown plan. So that. We can continue to enjoy them and point to them as part of Marion's history. I just think that that, to keep those bricks as part of Marion's story is important. And I think it's important to. The uniqueness of Marion and who we are and our future. So that's my comment. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I have not. Had a voice on this yet. As I looked at the options, first of all, I think Mike did an excellent job giving us the information that he gave us. Amount of time, which made us come to a very good informed decision. I have lived in Marion since 1962. And the importance of the brick streets in Marion to me is just part of. Especially the uptown Marion. So. As we go forward, again, I would certainly be in favor of. As I look at the different options, my favorite option was at least number six, having the center lane. Being brick and still retaining some of that brick. We still have some old brick streets in in Marion, more in the residential area. Around, if I recall, around 12th Street, 13th Street. And I don't anticipate in the future those are going to be saved. So as more time passes, those brick streets are probably going to be gone. Because you're going to come up with the same conclusion. Of how do you justify spending a lot of money to save all those streets? So I'm looking ahead down the future and saying. If we don't anticipate wanting to spend this kind of extra money to save some of those streets. I do feel we ought to at least spend the extra money one time. Save these bricks, one street, particularly in the uptown area.
Anyone else? Okay, if there are no more comments. Sounds like we're ready to vote.
Just a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Renee.
So just to clarify, because we were given seven options, but what we're voting on right now would be to, just to be clear. One of the options of, even though we don't know the amounts or which one it would be, would be to. Save the bricks and have the brick street between sixth and seventh. Is that correct? Just want to clarify.
Mike, can you answer that? Is that the motion you put together here?
Yes, the motion that's on the table would be option two, three, or four, depending on how much we get to actually salvage. So if there's a desire not to have, for example, the the parking stalls. To have the brick put there, we would have to have an amendment to the motion. Or if it was more of a desire just to salvage the brick for a project in the future, then that would need to be amended and voted on.
Okay.
So would I, I'd like to make a motion to salvage and and use in the future. Do I need to make that before we vote on this one? So Mayor, may I make that motion?
It would be in the form of an amendment to this, to this motion. Yeah. Can I, can I ask Steve a question first? Before I vote, before I vote, before I vote on your amendment, Steve, were you planning on making an amendment?
Well.
Proposing an amendment?
I would probably not be in favor of the amended as Renee is vocalizing it because. You know, I think the difference between talking about two, three, and four. Does require more dollars, potentially anywhere from. 50 to 70,000 dollars more. If we do try to do the entire road. But if we go with option number six and just do the driveline. Still have the accent. And again, I don't know how anybody feels about that, or even will, because he talked about it, but. That, you know, to save money, I also am cognizant of. Not spending any more money than we need to, but yet still preserving and having one brick street. So if I were to amend it, it would be amending, amending it probably to number six. But that's a very specific one and I, so I would not be. If nobody's in favor of the streets at all, I would support what Renee's talking about, but I would. Know on that simply because I'm in favor of number six.
Okay, so. I mean, does it make sense? Well, so are you interested in making an amendment, Steve?
Sure, I'll do that. And if that is not supported, then we can go on to a second amendment. I would make a motion to amend. That we proceed with installing salvaged and stored bricks on 10th Street. Sixth Avenue to six, sixth to seventh Avenue. And only doing, using the historical brick pavers in the driveline.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to. Salvage and reuse. The existing brick in the drivelanes between 10th, between Sixth and Seventh Avenue is on 10th Street. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on? The proposed amendment?
Yeah, I just have a quick question about protocol. If I was going to make an amendment. Why was someone else given the floor to put theirs on first? Just curious about the process.
Ryan, do you want to?
Well, bottom line is, in some respects. The mayor is not just a voting member of the council, but the mayor is also essentially the. Chair in the sense that he recognizes certain parties first. And it was within the mayor's discretion to ask first if Steve hadn't amended, had a proposed amendment to do it. So, I mean, it's allowable. And he exercised appropriate discretion in directing the meeting in that fashion.
Well, and from from my perspective, Renee, wasn't, I wasn't trying to avoid your your motion. I thought. Maybe Steve's motion could could be considered and if it's defeated. Then, you know, it seemed to me logical, then then that would be the next step was to look at your proposal.
I completely get why you did it. It was obvious from the start, but Steve didn't even utter the word amendment. Until you asked him if he had one to hopefully, I think in your mind, counter mine. So I just wanted it out there. I I don't agree with the process. It is your prerogative. I agree with Ryan, Mayor, you're the mayor. But I just feel like it was a slight. But that's it. I know we're ready to vote, so just wanted to clarify what that process was.
Please don't take it that way.
Your, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Is it, can I make a, just a comment about Steve's amendment?
Yes.
So I just want to go back to my prior comments. If we're limiting this to the old antique brick, which are the more durable of the brick options. That antique paver has a shorter expected. Life cycle than asphalt. And asphalt is less durable than. Portland cement concrete. So it's still at the lower end of the. Three options that we would have for ourselves. I hope I said that right.
Okay. So. That back to the, back to the protocol, I thank you, Grant. It seemed to me, Renee, that. If 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 there was any support for what Steve was saying. We wouldn't have even gone to that discussion and the way the way the agenda is proposed, we don't have those alternative. Those alternative options or alternative motions. So it seemed, it seemed, you know, that if there was. Support for what you wanted to propose, then everybody would. He's, but Steve would never have a chance to have his. His proposal even considered. So it it was nothing personal against you or any any attempt to slight you in any way, Renee. I'm just trying to. Make sure that all, all the options are fairly considered. Steve, go ahead.
Can we get a follow up clarification from Mike or Ryan about the Grant's? Comment that this antique brick is less durable than asphalt? That is not my understanding. So can we get that clarified, please? That's an important aspect.
Ryan, do you want to take that one or do you want me to take it?
Either or, doesn't matter. I know from a maintenance perspective. We really don't have any issues with it. I can't comment on how long it'll last after you reset the antique bricks. But I can say they're easier to maintain than the than the new bricks. But in terms of longevity, I I don't know that answer.
So in general, what I gave Grant was asphalt is better product than just having the brick because it's a. Mixture that gets put down versus something where a brick can be pulled out. And have issues with it. So it is still a maintenance issue regardless of what kind of bricks you have versus asphalt and concrete. It's a more of a solid surface. Now, nothing in Iowa is going to last forever. We do have winters. So we're going to have issues irregardless.
Okay. So I'll ask the city attorney, is it okay to proceed and vote on that amendment?
It is. I mean, it's it's been moved.
Okay. All right, if there's no more comments, we'll vote on the proposed amendment. And if people aren't in favor of that, there's certainly, that's, this is our chance to vote against the amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All, all, let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Harper?
No.
Ms. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ablosley?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Goodelia?
No.
Mr. Sterned?
No.
Okay, so the vote is four against and three in favor. The motion is defeated. So now we still have the original motion on the floor. Any amendment, proposed amendments to this motion?
Is now a good time for mine?
Please proceed.
Excellent. I would like to make a motion to amend. Regular Agenda E7, I don't know how to reference it. So that we would direct staff to keep all of the salvaged bricks from the street for use for a future project in the city.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to direct staff to. Oh, to amend this motion so that it is directing staff to salvage. The historic bricks and retain them to use in other projects. Is that accurate, Renee?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the amended, that would be the proposed amended motion. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, all those opposed, say no. Hearing no noes, the motion is approved. Now we have an amended motion. Which is to direct staff to salvage the historic bricks on 10th Street from Sixth to Seventh Avenue and retain them for use in other projects. Any discussion on the amended motion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So if they.
So if they are salvaged to reuse, do we need to have another motion put on the table to, uh. Say where, or can we just do that in the future meeting? Because if we're going to use them on Seventh Avenue and like the walkway. Or if they're going to be for something else. I guess for Mike.
Your honor.
What staff would propose is if they, if you want them salvaged, they'll be salvaged and palletized. For some future project that we're directed to use them for.
But if they were going to be used in the streetscape on Seventh Avenue, that needs to be in this meeting, or can that be in a motion in the next? Meeting.
Uh, staff would like that direction now so that we can incorporate that in the plans if that's council's direction.
Be looking for direction from legal on that?
Please.
Okay, um, if I understand counsel's question correctly, um, in light of the past amendment. By council member Goodalia, it's the, uh, staff is to retain any of the unused brick, the historic brick. For future, uh, use and that council member Brandt is asking, uh. If there'd be some clarification as to where that unused brick would be stored. And do we need to do that in, uh, can we do that in the current motion that's pending, or does that need to be a future motion? Is that correct, Will?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to say that since the motion is, the agenda item, uh, is relating to that salvage brick. And the agenda item as amended is directing staff to, uh, save and salvage and retain any of that. That any, um, discussion of where to save that is perfectly germane to the, uh, agenda item. That's currently on the floor, so that could be, uh, that could be addressed just within this, within this matter. And does not need a separate future agenda item.
Okay, so what you're saying is that we could, we can just during this, direct. Mike to use them in that location on Seventh Avenue, and then the rest can be saved for future projects.
Correct.
It does not have to be voted on.
It does.
Well, the, the motion, the motion on the floor still has to be, as amended, has to be voted on.
Correct.
Um.
But do we have to vote on saying that they need to be put into the project and used on Seventh Avenue if that's where they want to be used? Or if that's where we want them to be used?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, my, I, I guess my understanding is that was already a part of the existing motion is that's where it would be used. Am I mistaken in that?
It, it's, it's not.
Okay.
What Will wants to do is option seven that was presented earlier versus Renee wants to do an option of just salvaging. So I would think the amended, amended motion.
I, I would agree then with Mr. Barcolo with that clarification.
So we can do a further amendment to the motion if, if that's what people want?
You can, you can amend the motion as many times as you need to.
I'm sorry, Colette, yes, go ahead.
I just, um, so thanks for all of the help. Um, I'm trying to figure this out. If I, so now I might be a little confused, right? So let me circle back. Um, Will, are you, so somebody said option seven. Is that what you're wanting, Will, is option seven as? I guess I, what I was thinking, so where I was, was that we would salvage those bricks and use them somewhere in our uptown, right? Rather than, with, with the streetscape, kind of, maybe it's in the, um, city square, whatever that might be. But not necessarily on the roadways, but I think what I heard was you were wanting it for option seven. So seems like we might need to have some better understanding of what folks are wanting. At least Mike probably wants that, I would guess.
So maybe we just need to continue discussion, uh, because the motion on the, on the, on the floor now is. To just salvage and reuse them somewhere. Um, and Mike, am I correct in saying we don't have the option of? Waiting one more meeting to, to really look at all the options of where they can be used? I mean, we have to actually make a decision today?
It would be beneficial so we don't have to delay the project. The final plans are supposed to start their review in a short order. So it would be staff's preference to make a decision so that we can keep this and the development project that it's waiting on moving.
Renee, go ahead.
Information provided, it's other than just thinking about it, but.
Okay, Renee, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Um, yeah, I, like what Colette said, um, I could be more specific. And I, I don't have a place in mind for them in the uptown, although I believe that's where they belong. But being on the street is kind of the, what I'm against, just because of the wear and tear, the maintenance, the additional expense. To save and do it, and then the additional expense in the future because they break and they cave. And they, you know, all of that. So I would not be in favor of option seven because that is still on the roadway. But if we did something on the sidewalks or in the square or in the public space in front of the library. Or, you know, there are so many areas that we're revitalizing, I feel like we could find a good use. Or maybe we can construct something that's like a three D, you know, object, um, if you will, as part of the wayfinding. But being on the street is not anything I'm in favor for with the brick.
Okay, go ahead, Grant.
Thank you, um. So I'm just wondering, is part of what we would have to specify tonight is the end use? Or specific end use, or just to specify that it is used in the overall treatments? Of the streetscape project?
I think Mike's looking for a specific spot.
Okay, I, so i- if that's.
If, if, if they're, if, if, if they want, if they're going to be used in, uh, the uptown plan, right, Mike?
Yeah, if, if council doesn't know where they want to use them, if you just know you want to use them for a future project, Renee's notion is just fine. If you want to use them on the Seventh Avenue Streetscape project, then we need to amend the motion and I need to know that information.
So m- m- my concern with the specificity of input, Mike, that you're asking for. Is, um, we don't have a notion of a design or end use. This evening.
Yeah.
And I, I don't feel it is fair to my colleagues. To have to make that specification tonight without some additional due diligence. Which, uh, you yourself and others might need to inform. Um, you know, it could be that a walkway or a pathway, uh, utilizes the bricks. Or as I think Renee suggested, uh, you know, an, an elevated structure. Um, we just don't have enough specificity around the particular end use to make a good decision tonight. I, I really think the only direction we can give is let's save them. And with the intent that we, as quickly as achievable, define what that specific end use is.
I guess let me specify a little clearer. What I need to know is. That's fine, we can salvage them and we can use them for a future project and perfectly okay with that. And we can determine that whenever that time period comes. What I ultimately want to know is if you want them part of the current project, then I need that direction tonight in order to keep the project moving. So if council has no desire to put them on the current Seventh Avenue reconstruction streetscape project. Then we will just salvage them and we will determine at a later date where that goes. But if you want them incorporated as part of this project, then staff needs that direction.
And when you say incorporated as part of the project, you mean on Seventh Avenue?
Anywhere. So mayor?
Yes.
Um. I have a question for Mike. So option seven was to put those pavers in the Seventh Avenue. Along the walkway for, from Plaza to Plaza. Is the, the current plan to put new pavers in the roadway there?
Right now, it's being proposed that those would be concrete pavers to accent that crosswalk.
So there already are pavers going to be going there, so. I would think it'd be better to put those, some of those there, because everything coming out of the road is not going to fill up those two little walkway areas. And then we'll still have a bunch of bricks left over after the fact. And I would think that if we, it was budgeted for, in the project, to put in new pavers. Like, uh, along the sidewalks and stuff along Seventh Avenue, we could maybe do a change order at some point to use the bricks that we have. Instead of getting new bricks.
So at, at this, at this point, I think, you know, this discussion, uh. I- is about something that's not on the floor. So i- i- if, if you want to amendment, uh, propose an amendment, then you can do that and then this discussion can happen. Uh, on that topic. But, I mean, right now, the motion on the floor is whether or not we should just save them and use them somewhere else. If, uh, if you want to discuss whether or not they should go in the street, there really needs to be an amendment, uh, a, a proposed amendment. A motion to, to amend, then you can discuss it in that motion, in the discussion on that motion. Does that make sense?
Yes, if you're asking me, yes. I was just clarifying if there was being bricks to be used in the Seventh Avenue street.
Yeah.
Already. Before. Yeah, so I would like to make an amendment to the motion to direct staff to use. Some of the bricks that are salvaged from 10th. In the. Streetscape, the, for either side of the walkway across Seventh Avenue. This, in the street. I don't know how I word that better.
I understand. Is there a second?
One second there.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to further amend the motion. So that the salvaged brick, uh, be used in the currently planned walkway. Across Seventh Avenue. Is that accurate, Will?
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion that's been seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Did we vote on mine or not? Are we doing an amendment before we do the vote? I'm confused.
Right, because now we have, we have an amended motion, but there's another proposal, there's another, uh, proposed amendment to it. That can be either adopted or defeated, and then we'd go back to the amended motion. Is that right, Ryan?
To, just to clarify, uh, Renee's amendment was put to a vote and it passed.
It passed.
There's an amended motion on the floor, and then Will is making another motion to amend it further.
Got it. Okay, it's just very tangly.
Oh, it is.
Clarifying.
I'm diagramming this whole thing.
Okay, is there any discussion on Will's amended, uh, proposed amendment? Okay, we'll vote on the, on the proposed amendment. All those in favor of amending the motion, so that. I'm sorry.
Roll call on that, probably.
Uh, yeah, but the, 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 the vote is whether or not to, to use the salvaged historic bricks. From 10th Street in the walkways on Seventh Avenue, across Seventh Avenue. Okay, uh, Rachel, would you please do a roll call vote?
Ms. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Goodelia?
No.
Mr. Sterned?
No.
Mr. Harper?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so the motion has failed. Now we have, uh, the amended motion, which is to salvage the bricks from 10th Street. And retain them to use in other projects. Okay, um, any further discussion before we vote on the final motion?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just a comment. I would think there could be a process quickly, um, executed. That would give us a definition of where else they might be, uh, utilized and incorporated. Somewhere else in the overall redevelopment of, of uptown. Um, so I'll just leave it at that. I think we can define a use pretty quickly if we're diligent about it.
Sure. Yeah, I would, I would hope so. I, I wish that this, uh, discussion had started much sooner. Um, so that we would actually be having an informed, um, decision-making process right now. But, um, it's just the way it turned out. So, uh, Renee, you have one more comment before we vote?
I do. I think, um, again, I don't know the time constraints, but to Grant's point, this might be a great project for Iowa Big. Given the Splinters project, et cetera, if, um, we get some design ideas. Um, so just throwing it out there, but they did such a great job with that and they're part of the community and they might have some ideas as well. Thanks.
Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the adoption of the Uptown Master Plan Update. The public hearing is now open to have a short presentation, Tom.
Uh, yes, your honor, thank you. The, as, as the council's heard, the, the Marion Uptown Plan was presented at the work session. Um, I did not have a formal presentation this evening, um, and we've talked about this a number of times at different committees and such. So, um, uh, you know, I've not heard any public combat, uh, conversation. Or know of those that are, will, are wanting to present anything regarding this, so, um, if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The, the plan, uh, is on the webpage and, uh, um, we would like to move forward with it if possible, if needed.
Okay. At this time, we will take comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition. On the adoption of the Uptown Master Plan Update. So do we have any comments that were, have been received or anyone asked to address the council?
I have not received any comments for this item.
Okay, Tom, have you received comments outside the meeting?
I have not.
Note that for the record. Rachel, I assume no one is attempting to contact us at this time?
Correct.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing, move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine two four seven, adopting the Uptown Master Plan Update.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To approve resolution number two nine two four seven, adopting of the Uptown Master Plan Update Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution two nine two four seven, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. We have another public hearing regarding a request, rezone. Property from A one rural restricted and R two medium density, single family residential to P I Public Institutional. For the properties at six fifty five, six seventy five and seven seventy seven, South Fifteenth Street. This is for a project related to Marion Independent School District. We have a short presentation?
Yes, your honor, as indicated, this is a request rezoned property from A one to R two. Um, or, I'm sorry, from, from A one and R two to P I Public Institutional. Um, and the, the public institution is a new zoning district classification, which provides the opportunity. Um, for schools and related facilities to, to develop, uh. Uh, on the site and is, would be the, a consistent use for the school as, as the council is aware. And I think many of the public are aware, there's a, a proposed, uh, improvement project associated with Marion Independent School District. Does, uh, including the stadium and ancillary facilities. And so they're just getting, uh, the information and, and proceeding with the rezoning to ensure the availability of, of. The appropriate zoning to proceed with the facilities, uh, in, in the future. Um, I, I would point out that, uh, in, in, in the A one district, they are currently a permitted use. Uh, any expansion would require a conditional use permit. Um, so what they're. Um, so what they've requested is go to the PI District, which is a, a district that we would recommend, and uh, when the community does, uh, go through a rezoning process, which is specifically in this ward, we would recommend that it goes to the PI. So they're being proactive in, in that request. I, I just want to point out that, um, with the PI District, uh, their plans would be reviewed internally. Um, it would not require a conditional use permit, um, as they do currently with A1 and as other schools have. So under the new zoning, uh, to PI, it's a, it's, it's, they're basically have an entitlement to school facilities as a use, and the internal review would happen, um, administratively, so. And the difference in that, and I, I just like to point this out because it's a process upon which uh, folks would, would be engaged in, adjacent property owners. Uh, the process that currently would be, uh, Planning Commission would review and make a recommendation of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, who would make a final determination on the site. So with the entitlement, the uses would be permitted, and it would just be an internal review for site plan, a pro, site plan review process. Any questions? Sorry, I went through that rather quickly.
Okay, we'll, we'll save the questions for the, um, for the, uh, motion. Um, if you want to just hold on, Tom, then we'll, uh, the public hearing is now open, and we'll ask if there are any comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition to this measure. Rachel, have you received any comments or anyone asking to address the council?
Uh, yes, I received two comments prior to the meeting, which were forwarded, um, to council earlier. Um, the first one being from Janelle Brower with the Marion Independent School District, who spoke, uh, in favor of the measure. And the next one was from Diana Zrudzky with Marion Independent School District, also spoke in favor of the measure.
Okay. And is anyone, uh, asking to address the council at this time?
I have not received any other comments.
Okay. Tom, have you received comments outside the meeting?
Uh, no, I just, I think, I think the one, the comments that I've received have been forwarded, uh, to me from Rachel, so.
All right, seeing that there are no more comments, we will close the public hearing and move on to the motion.
Your, Your Honor?
Yes.
There, I, there are two hands up from the, uh,
Two hands from council?
No, uh, public attendees.
I don't see those. Uh, Rachel?
We'll have, Diana Zrudzky has her hand raised. We'll let her speak since she commented, and, um, whoever Chris is, if you can provide your full name and address in the Q and A box.
Okay, we'll go back and allow those two comments. Diana?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for taking, providing us with the opportunity to have this need addressed at this time. Um, I know it's kind of out of order of how you were planning to do the zoning, but something that's important to us for moving forward with the project. So thank you. I know you've had a long evening. I don't want to take more of your time, so.
Thanks, Dan. And then we have one more person, Rachel?
Yes, uh, Chris Grev at 1355 D Avenue.
Okay, Chris?
Hello, thank you guys for your time. Um, it's actually Chris Grieve, and that's fine. Um, so I guess I'm just trying to understand, uh, the zoning. Uh, so with the PI zoning, would I still be able to, um, put my two cents in as far as what? I guess my main objective is the property, I live on the corner right across from the park at Starry Elementary. So that was kind of a selling point, and I feel like it's, it's a great addition for the community to have that park there. So I guess ultimately, I want to be able to, to fight to keep that park and not have it turn into like a parking lot when they, you know, do the whole renovations of the schools and move Starry away. Um, so I guess with changing it to the PI zoning, um, would I, would my voice still be heard, or would I have to go through, uh, different means?
Tom?
Yes, um, so with the zoning, uh, the, the, any other site planning processes on the property that's being rezoned would, uh, would be done administratively through the, through, through cities, so there wouldn't be any public, um, presentations on behalf of the city. Now, I, I'm sure the school plans would, the, the school probably has their own uh, process upon which they'll, uh, project their plans, and so they probably have the, the ability to do that through the school board. But, um, I, I guess I'm not familiar enough with any of the plans that are being developed to, to know exactly where you're where you're talking about more parking being added, but I don't believe it's within the area proposed to be rezoned. Am I incorrect or correct?
Um, as far as I know, that the Starry Elementary is going to be shifted, and then I've heard talks that they're going to turn that into a high school. Um, I've been trying to scour plans and try to figure out exactly what they're going to do, um, with that lot. Cause I mean, ultimately, if it's going to be turned into an addition to the high school, I could see that being turned into a parking lot. So I guess I, I'm trying to follow this very closely, but at the same time is there's only so much information that's out there to the public at this time.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so any, any plans being developed by the school would be reviewed internally by the city to ensure that it's, you know, they're, they're, they're being developed in accordance with our rules and regulations. I think, I think the appropriate, um, folks to speak to would be at the, in the school board on that specific issue. About understanding all of what you're talking about.
Okay, all right.
Hey, I'm sorry. I would also say, so this is, this is a rezoning, there's, there's going to be additional readings of the ordinance, and I think, uh, uh, Chris, if you, if you want to call and talk to us, we can talk offline as well, um, regarding these things.
Yep, that'd be great. Yeah, I've been trying the last, uh, three days, read into the, the PI zoning and, and what it all entails. Um, but it leaves a lot to interpretation, so that'd be great.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, uh, that's a good suggestion, Tom, that Chris and anyone else who has concerns or questions could, uh, uh, contact the city's development staff with their questions, and we do have two more readings of this ordinance. And if there's still concerns, you are certainly, um, welcome to call any of the city council members to express your concerns about the ordinance. Okay. Is that the last public comment, Rachel?
Um, I do have, Janelle Brower is on the call. If anybody has any specific questions for her.
Okay, did she ask to address the council?
Uh, she said she could speak if needed.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Rachel? Uh, for Janelle? Okay. Then we will, uh, reclose the public hearing and move on to the motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 21 dash 02, approving a request to rezone property from A1 Rural Restricted and R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential PI Public Institutional for properties located at 655, 675, and 777 South 15th Street. This is on behalf of Marion Independent School District, and it's the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 21 dash 02, which is a request to, to rezone property from A1 Rural Restricted and R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential to PI Public Institutional for 655, 675, and 777 South 15th Street. Discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Tom, with it going to PI, you were saying that stuff would be reviewed internally by staff. Um, does that mean that, uh, like site plans would not go to planning and zoning and council for approval?
Correct. They, they would have never went, never come to council for approval before either.
They would not have because it was public institution or?
Uh, just under the A1, schools were made, or, or schools were made a conditional use a few years back. And so when they became a conditional use permit, they would be, they would be, uh, uh, reviewed by the Planning Commission, uh, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment would have zoning, uh, uh, site plan uh, authorization.
And can I ask, is that common throughout cities that, uh, a school or a public institution does not have to uh, get approval?
Um, I mean, it says, and some communities handle it as a zoning district its own. That's what we're moving to as a public institutional zoning district. Other times there, they are, uh, considered a conditional use permit. Under the conditional use permit, process council wouldn't have any purview over it either.
Right. So I guess I'm, my question, I guess, is why is it not getting, why, why would council and, and zoning commission not have any the final word, I guess, on any of those when we have some, on the design or whatnot, when we're, when we are with most rest of the city?
Well, I mean, we do, and the, we have, the council sees the overlays, um, that the council sees all the site development plans and, and project planning in the corridor and in, in planned unit development districts. Um, so it's not, it's not everywhere where the site plans get brought through the city council. So anywhere where we have a planned unit development or an overlay is when, uh, council sees site plans and, uh, development projects.
Gotcha.
At the time of a rezoning.
Of a rezoning, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, after discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just maybe a, a question in terms of comparability, and this is for Tom. Tom, uh, when, for example, Boulder Creek Elementary or a middle school was, uh, uh, constructed for, in the Lynnmar District, uh, did that specific set of site development plans come to council?
Those, those did, because they, they were, that was prior to us having the PI District. Um, I don't even think it was an adopted district at the time.
Okay.
They were all zone A1. And I, I can give you a little history. What what happened a few years back is there was no, there, there wasn't a whole lot of, uh, oversight on what happened on, on school locations and sites. And so we had a couple situations where traffic, uh, was being generated and issues were being created, uh, at specific intersections. So there was a discussion about, um, the necessity to do, to move forward with conditional use permits, so we could address a lot of the issues prior to the development occur. And so that's where the conditional use permit came into play. But there was some concern at that point because it really only went to the Planning Commission, and, and then the Zoning Board of Adjustment was the one that was providing for those conditional use permits. So really, there wasn't a whole lot of, uh, council interaction in those situations at, at the time. So we moved to, um, a, a zoning district that is specifically to uh, the public institutions, and that would, so that's where we are. Understanding that with, there would be a time in which we see where the schools are being located, located, that, through the rezoning. Uh, and then we would address all the issues, uh, internally with the site plan review process. So, I mean, it's I, I don't think it's any different than what other communities would do in reviewing a site like this.
Okay, thank, thanks for that, uh, bit of historical context.
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Quick comment. Um, earlier when the gentleman was on, and I did not catch his last name, I just got Chris. You had said something about reaching out to council if there's issues with what was going, you know, pre, being presented with us, but it sounds like we're not going to have any say on how it's going to be. So I guess I would just want to let him know if he's still on, and anyone else that lives in that area, that if they're having questions or whatnot, then maybe they should contact the school board. Cause they're apparently going to be the ones who making the decisions on what all is going to be built or how it's going to be built.
Well, we will have a say for two more readings of this ordinance.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 21 dash 02, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Next, we have another public hearing regarding comprehensive plan amendment from Corridor Commercial to Light Industrial and a rezoning request from C3 General Commercial to M1 Light Manufacturing for the property at 2369 Highway 13, Marion, Iowa. This is a request by Green Acres Storage LLC. We have a short presentation, Tom.
Yes, Your Honor, um, the the item before you tonight is a public hearing regarding the rezoning of, of the corner of 151 and 13. Uh, I know there are folks that are on the line that would, wanted to address the council in a formal presentation uh, with, via PowerPoint. We were, we were unable to, uh, uh, provide that opportunity this evening, and it's my understanding there's a desire for us to continue the public hearing uh, to the next meeting to allow that presentation to occur. Um, I don't know if, if Mr. Green is on the line and wants to address that, that issue, but um, he is the applicant, and as such, if he would like to ask that that be continued, uh, staff would certainly support that.
Okay. That, is your are you saying that, well, we need to decide that before you make your presentation and have the public comments?
Well, that's, that's how I would, that's, I guess how I would, uh, proceed. Uh, I would hate to go through it and then, and redo it at the next meeting. However, if you want me to, to briefly go over it, and there are others that I want to speak to it, we could do that as well. I guess I'd, what I'd really like to know is if, if Mr. Green would like this, uh, continued to the next meeting and have the actionable items at the next meeting.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Green, are you on the line?
Yes.
Hi, uh, welcome. Uh, my question is, uh, I, I understand from Tom that you have a, a presentation to make. And I know you've presented to the council several times. Uh, you know, I guess my question is, is there anything new in this presentation? Uh, or, or is it something that you can talk about it without the, without the PowerPoint?
Um, yes, I, I don't, um, I have never presented anything officially on this, uh, proposal. Um, you maybe have gotten bits and pieces. Um, that was more towards um, the BR District that we would, um, our existing facility would be a, a legal non-conforming zoning, and it was more about that. I have never presented anything officially to the city council.
Okay.
At this point, we, um, did present to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we have never, uh, res, or never presented to the city council yet. All the information that I would have on my PowerPoint would be all new to you folks.
Okay, and we certainly want to give you that opportunity, so.
Yeah, and, and we were told that we would be allowed to present it, and that we just needed to send it to the city clerk. I believe we have an email, uh, from the Planning Department that we would be, but then uh, at, I don't know, 5:04, we were told we were not able to do that. So that's why we want to, uh, delay it, so that we can, you know, if this is the proper channel, um, that we have to do that, we have to ask for a presentation, then that's what we would, uh, prefer to do.
Okay. Okay, uh, thank you. So Ryan, I assume we would need a motion to continue the public hearing?
Um.
Or do I just continue?
I think, I, I think it's just, uh, since it is just a public hearing and it's a ministerial function of the mayor, I think you just have the authority. I think you just have the authority to postpone it without actually putting it to a formal vote.
Okay. All right, are there any strong feelings on council about continuing it?
And just to clarify, Your Honor?
Yes.
I assume item F-six then is the resolution that's the follow-up to this and possibly F-seven, those would need motions to table if they are related to F-five.
Okay, yes, so those would need to be tabled. Okay, I think we have the process here. Hearing that there are no strong, there's no strong opposition, opposition from council members that I hear to continue the public hearing, we will continue it until the following meeting. So the, the meeting, the public hearing remains open and continued until the following meeting. Was there anyone else that wanted to address council tonight on this topic that, that wants to speak this evening?
I have not received any other comments.
Okay, all right, so then we will continue the public hearing until the next meeting and move on to F-six.
Your Honor, I move to table resolution number two-nine-two-four-eight approving the comprehensive plan amendment for corridor commercial to light industrial for property located at two-three-six-nine Highway thirteen, Marion, Iowa. This is Green Acres Storage LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table resolution two-nine-two-four-eight. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling resolution two-nine-two-four-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to table ordinance number two-one dash zero-three approving the request to rezone property from C-three general commercial to M-one light manufacturing for the property located at twenty-three sixty-nine Highway thirteen, Marion, Iowa.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to table ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved for items F-one through eleven. I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-two-four-nine approving the broad and main central corridor review for property located at eleven oh seven Seventh Avenue, Marion, Iowa. By Eagle View Partners, LC and DCI Group.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-two-four-nine approving the broad main central corridor review for property located at eleven zero seven Seventh Avenue, Marion, Eagle View Partners, LC and DCI Group. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, or, excuse me, all those opposed, same sign. Motion, the resolution passes with one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number two-zero dash one-four approving the rezoning request from R-two medium density, single-family residential to PDR planned development residential for property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Final consideration.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty dash one-four approving the rezoning request from R-two medium density, single-family residential to PDR planned development residential for property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Final consideration. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ordinance passes with one abstention.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-two-five-zero approving the final site development plan for Green Park Apartment Living located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue on behalf of Green Park Apartment Living LLC.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-two-five-zero approving the final site development plan for Green Park Apartment Living located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Questions or discussion?
Steve? Yeah, I'd asked the question on Tuesday whether the old Y site would be tore down as part of this final site development plan. Tom, did Tom get an answer for that?
Yes, the, the site is proposed to be demolished upon first phase and then graded. So I think they're trying to clear the site and grade it up, get it looking nice with the initial phase.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution to pass, the resolution passes with one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-two-five-one approving the Green Park Living Apartment Preliminary Platte for property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-two-five-one approving the Green Park Living Apartment Preliminary Platte for property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. I think I just said Green Park Apartment Living LLC six times in a row. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes with one abstention, and I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Yeah, at this time, we have a public forum for comments from the public on anything that is not on the agenda for this evening. Do we have any members of the public who have asked to address the council?
I have not received any comments.
Okay, we'll wait just a little bit to make sure that no one is attempting to contact us. Okay, we'll move on to, to council comments. We'll start with Colette.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to, again, just really share my excitement for what the Public Library is doing with our two school districts, and it really is just a really big deal when we think about equity and access. So appreciate, that's some hard work that went into that and really appreciate that. The second thing, if anybody is still listening, I, I just want to encourage folks to be patient with our crews out on the roads, trying to find places to put the snow, getting the snow off the road, right, so you can get to where you need to. I don't think it's, doesn't feel typical to have this much snow in the winter, so I just ask for patience and thank Ryan's team for all the hard work and, and trying to get our streets cleared for us to get through. So those are the only two things I have tonight.
Thank you. Will?
I was muted, sorry. I guess just let everyone, tell everyone to stay nice and warm this next week. It's supposed to get really cold. And then just wish Tom Traherne a happy birthday. Hopefully, we had done soon, so you can celebrate.
Steve?
Nothing tonight.
Randy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Renee?
Yes, thanks, Your Honor. And just one thing, I think, you know, every February goes by, and we talk about Black History Month, and I really appreciated the proclamation you made earlier, and given all of the recent current events, and this probably being the civil rights matter of our time, with everything that's happened as of late, I would really encourage people to use this month to learn more, to get immersed, to get involved, and, and really get to know more about Black History, and I think we can all benefit from that. Thanks.
Great.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I have just one comment, or actually three comments, two of which are very short. I want to draw attention to the good work that the Investment Oversight Committee is starting to do. We, Randy and I joined a meeting with that group today. Five members who have expertise in financial investment and oversight, and they did some very deep review of our drafted investment policy, and that will continue into another meeting in case there's any follow-up items, but I'm just very enthused about the work that that team is doing, and I just want to give them a call up. The final two things is, Tom, happy birthday. You are in fact youth of America still, at least from my vantage point. And then the other thing is, go Chiefs, okay? Go Chiefs.
Okay. For my part, I also want to wish Tom Traherne a happy birthday. And want to thank the council for their thoughtful consideration of the Streets Project that we talked about this evening. It's important that we look at all options to make sure that we have informed decisions. The way the, the way this all played out, it, it wasn't ideal. But I think, you know, it's important for us to have all the, to consider all the options when we're making decisions and make fully informed decisions. I appreciate the consideration of the council and would encourage us all to continue seeing the best in each other and give each other the benefit of the doubt and continue to work together on behalf of the residents of Marion. As Renee said, I encourage everyone to take the opportunity to learn more and be, be proactive in our drive as a city to become more inclusive and welcoming during the Black History Month and every month of the year. So, thank you. Appreciate everyone's patience this evening, given that it's all online. It was a little disjointed, but I think we made it through, and wish everyone a happy weekend, and we'll see you next time. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.